Ready? I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We're gonna wait for quiet. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you for joining us this evening. Tonight's roll call, all members are present with the exception of Enrique. Next up is the open forum section. And the open forum section is accordance to our board policy 203. And it's a 15-minute time period set aside to receive citizen input through the open forum segment. And as now we are transitioning back to live, in-person board meetings, I just wanted to reiterate a couple housekeeping items as it pertains to open forum. This open forum section is during our business board meetings, the ones that we have here on Monday nights at 6:00. They have the sign-up sheet right outside the room where you can sign up and speak on an item not on tonight's agenda. And your time limit is three minutes. So we set it, you know, we set aside 15 minutes. And so that's where you get the three minutes, basically. Tonight, we do have a few people that want to speak to the board. And so I would like to honor the fact that you all came out tonight. And so we do have six speakers. I do want to recognize Mr. Trajano. I did ask him, because he has spoken to us on the board about his issue. And there are a couple other people here. So he's gonna stand behind and kind of give up his time to kind of keep us within that 15 to 18-minute timeframe. So thank you for doing that. If there is any follow-up needed, the superintendent or the designee that she, one of her staff, will get back to you if that's needed, if there's questions brought to the board. This all, and I would encourage anyone that's interested in the open forum or how the board operates, to really look at policy 203. It's our operating norms. And it's something that, as a board, we hold very close to our hearts, I guess I would say, as to how we operate. And it says a lot of really good information if you want to find out things about how the board runs and how things work. So with that, I do have, I believe, six speakers tonight. And I'll just call you up one at a time. If you, when you do come up, if you'd please state your name and address, just for the official record. Oh, I forgot this part. So in keeping with, trying to keep us on track, Michael is going to hold up just a sign that'll just tell you you have 15 seconds left. And then, just to kind of give you a warning, and then she'll hold up a little red card to say when it's time to stop. All right? First up is Sarah Dirks. Yep, and you can just come right on up to the microphone and...
Good evening, everyone. I'm actually somewhat new to the Prior Lake area. I moved over here from Lakeville last year.
Sir, can I just have your address?
Oh, sorry. My address, my address is actually, my permanent address, which is 104 Southwest 9th Avenue in Faribault, Minnesota. So anyway, I'm actually here tonight just researching whether this is the school district that I want my children to grow up in. We've been through a very interesting year. And I have some questions. I realize it's probably not the time where you can actually answer them. But I love the Prior Lake area. I don't, I'm not super familiar with the school system because I chose to keep my kids where they were to not, you know, until I knew for sure where I wanted to bring my kids. So the questions that I have, and you know, this is not just me. I'm representing, I'd say, at least a couple of thousand parents that feel, you know, the same way, kind of in our area. I personally don't believe that there's any room for political agendas in school. So I'd like to know whether, well, first and foremost, I come as a, as someone with a lot of background in the health field. So I've been a health professional for 16 years. I believe in medical freedom. So I would want to know what the position is on medical choice and privacy for this fall, considering everything that's going on, vaccination policies, whether children are going to be allowed to come to school if their parents believe that they don't need to have a vaccine because God gave us a 99.9% effective innate immune system against the virus anyways. So that would be my first question. Does the Prior Lake Savage School System intend to affiliate with any kind of curriculum having to do with critical race theory, Black Lives Matter, or comprehensive sex education? If, if the answer is yes to any of those questions, I personally wouldn't want to have my kids involved in the school system. Is there any teaching about any gender other than male or female? I think this is creating a ton of confusion for kids. I'm hearing about gender pronouns. This is family, these are family issues, not, not something that needs to be taught to kids, certainly at the elementary school age. And, you know, I guess, and then on another note is really kind of what sets this district apart from others. I had a great conversation with the principal at Five Hocks Elementary. And she talked about cares and, you know, social-emotional learning, which I thought was really great. I think that's, I'm definitely on board, you know, with that. Thank you. And is there strong leadership in this community that's ready to unite and push back against some of the corrupt doctrineation that's coming from our state and federal governments? That's, that's what I'm looking for. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Next up, Eden Alum. I'm sorry if I messed your name up. Please correct me when you come up.
Hi, my name is Eden Alumu. My address is 12933 Second Avenue South. I would first like to thank the Board of Directors for having been given the opportunity to voice our concerns about rising issues in our community. I understand that for some people, it may be hard to view issues such as equity inclusion plans or for students and staff to have any positive impact on them because it may not necessarily be directed towards them. But that also validates that there is no negative impact on them either. Although, I would like to say that in order to define equity, it doesn't necessarily dissociate a certain group of people from another. Rather, it provides resources and opportunities for all groups of people despite racial background, gender identity, or financial status to all reach one common goal and destination. I believe Prior Lake can start by providing equal opportunities through this new equity plan for a better future for all of our children. Our schools may be a safe space or a common ground that students can go to and feel heard by their teachers and peers. As a student of Prior Lake High School and the community myself for the past two years, my experiences have been far from normal due to COVID and so many changes in our world. Change that is better for all of us should be accepted. But with an open mind, myself as well as many others in our community should accept this change, for students to experience a better elementary, middle, or even high school career. This new equity plan will put our community a step forward in order to walk hand in hand to find success together, starting by eliminating microaggressions in our classrooms, talking about the things that we think is uncomfortable. But what is truly uncomfortable is not addressing modern-day issues. Providing students of color with opportunities to speak about their experiences in our community and what we can do to help each other feel valued, safe, and comfortable. Simple things like this may be hard to rationalize as someone who is not a person of color. But I assure you that there is absolutely no harm in practicing these daily peacemakers. Any negative impact that you think may lie beneath an equity, an equity plan tells me that the issue is the fear of positive change. This call for change doesn't take away from another group or one. In fact, in most ways, it is meant to bring us all together. As well as the concern of depriving our children with the focus of our education does not have any significance whatsoever. Educating ourselves about each other's cultures, religious practices, and who we choose to love should not be frowned upon, let alone silenced. Because whether we all take different paths, the equal opportunities we are provided with starts today. It starts in our classrooms. It starts in our sports practices. It starts in our homes. And it starts in Prior Lake. And there is no doubt in my mind that with a persevering Board of Directors and other leaders in our community, that we can put aside our differences to meet our final destination: success.
Next up is Becky Stark.
My name is Becky Stark, 150 East Burnsville Parkway in Burnsville. Greetings, everyone. I come to you as I prepare to go into my 21st year of teaching here at Hidden Oaks Middle School. And if my math is correct, that means I've taught over 3,000 of your kids. In my first year, in 2001, I had one girl of color. No boys. I'm not excluding the boys. But one student of color. This year, it was approximately 30% of my teaching load, which I think if I do the math right, was around 50. Additionally, for the first time in my career, I had students approach me, not something I taught them. Students approached me requesting that I use they/them pronouns. The reality is that the demographics here in Prior Lake are changing. They've changed a lot already. And so too are our needs to meet the needs of all of our students. I'd like to, as a teacher, thank you for your cognizance of this as a board and for your work to pass the Equity and Inclusion Resolution and for hiring a Director for Equity and Inclusion to help guide us through the work that's needed so we can better meet the needs of our changing student community. I appreciate you cementing your commitment to fulfilling this mission in PLSAS in the resolution of committing ourselves to educate all students. And I also thank you for clarifying what "all students" means to you. I think that's important, and your transparency and your support in that is definitely appreciated. Reading through the resolution and hearing your support through our conversations gives me hope that we'll even better serve all of our students in the future in a way that they can all feel both safe and valued here at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. I'd also like to briefly address those who are nervous about the passage of this resolution. I think we need to validate that people are afraid of change. My impression over the years is that parents overwhelmingly appreciate and trust the teachers here. It comes up in our survey. I think it was 94% this year. And I have had very minimal negative interactions with parents as in my tenure here in the district. That being said, I'd like to ask people who are afraid to consider having conversations about their concerns with the teachers in the community. Ask them what actually happens in our classroom. I teach in front of an audience of 28 to 36 every single day, and it's really hard for me to hide what I'm doing. I promise you that we'll be open and honest. I guess I can't promise for everyone. I promise you I would be open and honest. The Board can attest to the fact, I think, that I don't typically hold back. Rather than having conversations amongst yourself about what you think is going on, ask us. Please ask us. Thank you.
Jania Rucker?
Hello, I'm Jania Rucker. I live on 5249 160th Street Southeast in Prior Lake. First, I'd like to start off by saying, as a student at Prior Lake High School, I appreciate the efforts the Board is making for minority students to feel more comfortable and safe, to feel valued and have others understand that we are all different in some ways but similar in others. No matter the circumstances, race, religion, or sexuality, we all deserve to feel safe, free from intimidation, verbal abuse, or any conflicting acts because of something that is not understood between one another, being valued for our contributions as students rather than being judged by our looks, beliefs, or preferences. This movement is not to categorize students by dividing them into groups. I believe this movement is to engage students, parents, families, staff, and community members to strengthen a culture of respect and inclusion, which is the seventh clause in the resolution. Students wearing Black Lives Matter t-shirts and adding their preferred pronouns to their name when introducing themselves does not hurt or negatively change the environment in the school. The movement will provide Prior Lake the opportunity to have uncomfortable conversations, which I believe growth, you, there's growth and discomfort. I want to be clear, the Equity and Inclusion Movement does not equate to the learning of the critical race theory in its entirety as it has nothing to do with that in the resolution. The movement is not taking away valuable academic material or time away from students. It's providing the students with an understanding of others. School is a place to learn and create relationships. Socializing is a big aspect when it comes to public schooling. From elementary to high school, we are all taught to be kind and respectful. We are not taught to use derogatory terms when we feel upset, however, it still happens. Therefore, the misunderstanding and hostile aggression may derive from home and lectures that aren't given to children because of what parents believe they shouldn't have to. But the truth is, we live in a generation where social injustice, police brutality, hate speech, and microaggression, and willful ignorance is broadcasted all throughout social media. Children as young as elementary school are using social media, by the way. Why is it okay for children to see the reality we live in through their phones but not properly holding discussions in schools in the comforts of their home? Again, as a student of Prior Lake, I appreciate the efforts the Board is making, and I hope everyone will appreciate it as well.
Next up is Toni Heiser.
Can I have Paula speak?
Oh, sure.
That's okay?
Yep. Okay.
Hi there, I'm Dr. Paula Thompson. I am a retired physician from The Ridges Hospital in Burnsville. And also, I used to practice at The Ridge Valley Clinic. Just real close here. And I'm here to talk to you tonight. She/her/hers, by the way. I'm here with the Climate Majority Project of the South Metro. Members here can raise their hands. We work for climate justice. And the reason we are continuing to bring the issue of electric school buses before the Board is because it is an issue that combines social justice and environmental justice. The truth is that climate change and environmental pollution affect disadvantaged communities more than privileged communities. Disadvantaged children more frequently have no alternative but to use public busing. And currently in our school district, this means that they are exposed to the toxins and diesel fumes whether they like it or not. Researching the medical literature on the health effects of diesel exposure is quite disturbing. Ultra-microscopic particles and black carbon are not caught in the filter mechanism of the lungs, but instead pass directly into our bloodstreams. Among these particles are carcinogens and other poisons that can cause cancer, including childhood leukemia, stroke, and heart disease, as well as significantly worsening asthma. Female teachers and staff of childbearing age are exposed also, and they will have an increased risk of birth defects, learning disabilities, ADHD, and autism. I know that we sent you some information where you could look at these studies directly. I also wanted to just review very quickly the academic benefits. A Georgia study of over 700,000 students showed that reducing diesel fume exposure significantly improved test scores. There was a Michigan study that showed children on cleaner school buses had an 8% lower rate in absenteeism. And then you can see I put up here a Georgia study on, that just kind of visually shows some of the areas, the health areas that are a concern for us. The transportation sector of Minnesota creates the largest portion of greenhouse gases in our state. So an obvious part of the solution to this pollution, health and climate problem, is to transition as quickly as possible to clean electric school buses for our school fleets and put our children first. Toni is going to talk a little bit about a lot of funding that is becoming available for this. And I hope that each one of you will consider backing efforts to go after those funds for our community. Thank you.
Thank you again for your attention today. So why am I advocating for electric buses?
Sorry, Toni, can you just say your name?
Oh, yes, Toni Heiser, 17327 Wilderness Circle. So electric buses can be fiscally responsible decision in the long run. Yes, upfront costs are more and charging infrastructure is needed. But a recent article in School Bus Fleet Magazine about operator experiences in adopting electric school buses indicate that one fleet experienced 80% fuel savings and 60% savings in maintenance costs, and another experienced 90% savings across both categories. And a recent Reuters article cites that the upfront costs can be recovered after around 3.5 years thanks to cheaper operating costs, according to the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. And according to a report from the U.S. Public Interest Research Group, a vehicle-to-grid-enabled electric bus will save about $170,000 to $240,000 in lifetime fuel and maintenance costs. So how to get started? As I'd indicated in the past, what is often cited across the literature on this topic is to engage the various stakeholders, including fleet operator, bus manufacturers, and utilities, as well as the public constituents. Manufacturers such as Blue Bus and Thomasbilt have set up consultative sales structures for electric buses where they can provide feasibility studies, find and apply for grants on your behalf, engage electric utilities in regards to charging infrastructure and other service. As an alternate approach, there are other organizations available, such as the Climate Mayor's Electric Vehicle Collaboration, the Electrification Coalition, and the government organization Sourcewell Minnesota, which can provide resources such as connecting with bus manufacturers, as well as cooperative purchasing, financing, and funding resources, as well as infrastructure resources. So why now? There's free money on the table in terms of grants, et cetera, but it will not be there indefinitely. For example, Minnesota will receive a total of $47 million from the National Volkswagen Settlement over the course of 10 years, beginning in 2018, with 50% of these funds earmarked for the current Phase 2 through 2023 and the remaining 25% for Phase 3 during 2024 to 2027. The Phase 2 budget includes $4.7 million explicitly earmarked for electric school buses, or approximately 14 units. Other potential programs, such as the $10 billion Clean Commute for Kids Act, co-sponsored by Minnesota Senator Tina Smith, would provide grants to replace existing buses with zero emission buses. But the timeframe also proposes for this program is 10 years. I also make mention of these timelines because the initially mentioned article referring fleet operator experiences included the quote from an operator, normally it takes six to nine months before the utility even breaks ground. So the process takes time, and that's why I call to action to start the process in order to take advantage of the financial benefits which may be available. So thank you for everybody's attention.
Okay. That concludes, I believe, all of our speakers. I just want to say a special shout-out to our students that spoke. I know it's never easy to come in front of us. I mean, though we sit behind a desk, there's seven eyes staring at you in a room full of people. But to speak from the heart, I know it's difficult to do. So thank you. All right. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? By Mary, second?
Second.
By Jonathan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0. Next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion on any of these items. Tonight, the items are the financials, the bank reconciliation statement from May 2021, the building bond investment report, approval of the school board minutes from June 14, 2021 regular meeting, June 28, 2021 professional development, personnel items, candidates for employment, resignations, terminations, non-renewals, district retirements, which I don't think we have any. Oh, I'm sorry, we do. Michelle Newman, note that. Leaves of absence, approval of the 21 and 22 memberships, which include the 2021 MSBA Policy Services, the 2021-22 AMSD Association of Metropolitan School Districts, the Metro ECSU 2021-22, 2021-22 Minnesota State High School League membership. And last would be the Schools for Equity and Education membership for 2021-22. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as listed?
So moved.
By Michael, second?
Second.
By Amy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0. The resolution for the acceptance of gifts? Yeah, let me just go to that page here. There, one second. As noted in your board packet, the resolution for the acceptance of gifts are listed. Sorry, I always try to find it because I like to look at it when I'm doing it. And for some reason, I don't hear this. Oh, sorry. Anyway, okay, those are listed in your board packet. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution of the gifts as listed?
So moved.
By Julie, second?
Second.
By Mary. This is, any questions, comments? All right, this is a roll call vote. Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 6-0. Next up, Laker Pride. Lot of state champions. Exciting.
Good evening, everyone. It is so great to see so many people here tonight, and especially wonderful to see so many students here who we are honored to celebrate. We welcome you to come back anytime you want, to any meeting that you want. You help ground us and remind us that the question that always has to be on our mind is what's best for students as decisions are being made. So tonight, we celebrate Prior Lake High School state champions. And as we celebrate the athletes who are here this evening, the coaches, the families who are here this evening, we also are celebrating being state champions in an unprecedented year. And tonight, you're representing state champions. But you're also representing every single one of your peers who also fought through a pandemic, had schedules changed all the time, had practices canceled, had to quarantine, had to do so many things in order for us to be able to compete, to have the opportunity to compete, and in order for you truly to be victorious in your state championship goals. So congratulation to you all. At this point, I'm going to ask Beth Fuller, who served as our interim Activities Director for the year, along with Jeff Marshall, who has been on the payroll for, I think, about 11 days now, as our new Activities Director, to come forward. And they will be introducing coaches and students so that we can truly celebrate some amazing accomplishments. So please come on up.
Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Stallow. I appreciate that. And my hope is that all the approvals go through tonight so that I still have a job come tomorrow. It really is an honor to be here. And as a, as a community member, to be able to become a part of the staff here at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. And to be able to honor and recognize these individuals tonight. There are very few schools in the state of Minnesota who can say that they can recognize as many state champions as the Prior Lake High School students can do so this year. And again, as Dr. Stallow mentioned, what a year with, with the pandemic. And again, to be able to persevere and to be able to represent your team and your school and to be so successful in doing so really is fantastic. So it is an honor and a pleasure for me to be able to be here, to be able to recognize these individuals. Because as I said, there are very few schools in the state who can do such a, such a piece. So Ms. Fuller is going to hand out some certificates. And as I call names, please feel free to come on up here to get those certificates. We're going to start with our girls lacrosse team. We have one of our coaches here, Jessica Jurovic. Jessica, come on up. The girls lacrosse team finished this past spring as state champs once again. So congratulations.
So most of the students are participating in lacrosse tonight. Jessica's here to represent the entire team and the coaching staff.
As Beth pointed out, again, with it being the summer, there are a lot of our athletes who aren't able to attend tonight, as well as coaches. So we're very appreciative of those who could come out here tonight. On our boys track and field team, Gabe Smith. Gabe Smith was a double state champion in two events this year as a distance runner. Gabe, come on up, as well as Gabe's distance coaches, John Maresch and head coach Ken Clam. Clam.
Guys did an amazing job all spring, and had quite the success. Like Jeff said, double champ. And so it's pretty unheard of. This guy just creams it. He just goes and goes. He picks a goal, crushes it. So keep that up all the way through life, and you'll be a rock star. We'll be watching you everywhere.
Next up, representing girls track and field, Samantha Barrett. Samantha, come on up. Samantha was a state champion this spring in one of our jumps events. She was coached as a jump coach by Blair Rumel and head coach Jenna O'Brien.
So same thing here. Sam has been pretty much crushing her goals as well. She started a little bit later in the sport, and then just really excelled. And I'm going to let Blair say all the specifics, but it's just been reaching PR, 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 so...
So Sam and I were actually at the same meeting as a sophomore. Sophomore year, Sam's sophomore year, was her first year doing track, coming over from, I guess, like career in gymnastics prior to. Had never done track before. That same year, I had never coached jumps before. So we were both newbies the same year, and Sam came out and casually won state and broke our school record in the triple jump, her first year ever as a sophomore. Last year, her junior season, obviously, we weren't able to participate because of COVID and having to miss out on all of that. So we were super excited to be able to come back her senior year, and really hopeful and excited for the things she was going to be able to do. I will try and remember the stats off the top of my head. I believe she won every single one of our meets in the triple jump. This year decided to try long jump just for fun. She was the conference champion in triple jump, the conference champion runner-up in long jump. She won sections in triple jump, and then also qualified for the state meet in four events, both jumps and then two relays. She won the state meet in triple jump, was the runner-up in long jump, and broke her own school record, not once or twice, but three times this season, all in the same two-week timeframe. So Sam's clearly a phenomenal athlete. She plans on participating in track next year at UW Lacrosse, and continuing her education there as well. So it's been super fun to see Sam and all of her successes that she's had at Prior Lake.
Next up is the Prior Lake skeet team, and we do have a number of members of our skeet team here tonight. Justin Kingery, Tanner Thompson, John Worthing, Ian Weecraft, Wes Brainerd, Jeremiah Caldwell, and then Paul Kingery, who is our head skeet coach. Come on up. These guys were able to compete this past spring. I was given some information ahead of time about, this is not the trap team, this is the skeet team, where they were state champs, and a lot of these guys do participate in both of them. But again, this is a spring sport, and something that these guys were just recently awarded the state championship. So congratulations, gentlemen.
Again, very exciting to follow everything. We didn't get to be there in person, though I know we hosted it this year at the Minneapolis Gun Club. So we got to hear all the updates from Scott Conrad in terms of how things went, and your success in winning the state championship, and Ian being the top gun for state in skeet. So I don't know if that's exactly how they say it or not, but I know that's the crown that he used when he talked to us. So I'm also going to let Paul just say a few words about this group, because I know it's year after year, just amazing volunteer coaches that we have, and supporting this team, and many of them are also on the trap team, and they excel every year. Again, the difference in the winner of that was like four points, in terms of being fourth place or first place. So just amazing.
Yeah, thank you. We have five representatives here tonight that are on both our trap and our skeet shooting teams. They're both clay target teams that are represented by our school. We have about 70 shooters, young men and women, on our team, and these are five representatives that choose to shoot skeet. Each one of them did a great job. We were, as Beth mentioned, fourth place finishers in the state trap tournament. There was four birds total that separated all of the teams that were there to compete that day, 40 teams. And then skeet, we did come out on top, won the first-ever state tournament for the Prior Lake skeet team. So very proud of these five shooters. We're going to lose five of our shooters to graduation this year, so we're going to be in a rebuilding year next year, but we expect great things. So thank you very much.
Next up, representing our wrestling team, head coach Joe Block. I believe I saw Joe here. Come on up. And is Alan here too? Yep. Alan Kohler, come on up. Alan was a... Come on up, Alan. Alan was a state champion this past year with wrestling. I'm not sure in the weight class, but I don't think he was in the heavyweight weight class. So what weight class were you in, Alan? 106. So state champion of the 106 weight class. So congratulations.
Excellent. And we're going to let Joe talk a little bit here, because I know there's other events that have been captured by you. Been watching Twitter and following along, and I know there's some exciting international news as well.
So Alan was the 106-pound state champion, but this year, he wrestled 106, 113, 120, and 126. Very much a team player, and pretty much went wherever we put him. He also had the opportunity to travel to Mexico here, I don't know, three weeks ago, and participate in the Pan Ams, where he won double gold in both freestyle and Greco. So that's super exciting for Alan. He is now preparing for the Junior National Tournament, which is up in Fargo, North Dakota, starting on Saturday this week, actually. So we're heading up Saturday morning, and hopefully we'll bring back a couple titles. So congratulations, Alan.
And our last team to represent is our boys cross-country team. They want to start heading up here. On this, on the team at that point was Gabe Schmidt, Magnus O'Connor, Kyle Nordling, John Maher, Hootie Haig, McCoy Ross, Blake Vanderweedy, John Ridgely, and Zach Johnson, and they are coached by John Maresch. Now, as many of you do know and probably realize, we didn't have official high school league state championships last fall, but it is my understanding that when all was said and done, it was, there was no doubt, when you could look at times and compare times, that these gentlemen here were by far and away the best team in the state of Minnesota at that point, and they are being recognized as state champions from last fall. So congratulations, gentlemen.
That pretty much says it all, in terms of what happened. We just had an amazing season. These guys have been running together for a very long time, and they've really pushed each other, and made things awesome in terms of supporting and cheering on each other, and getting the best out of each other. Coach Maresch does a wonderful job in keeping the culture just supportive and maxing out how performances go. And these guys put in the hours and miles and all kinds of hills, and you probably see them running around town, but they've just done an amazing job, and are great kids, and we love watching you guys. So good luck in the future. We've got a few returners, and I'll see if Maresch wants to say any other words here.
Plain and simple, we had four all-state runners. We've never had that before. We had four in the top 17. When you do that, it's pretty hard to get beat. So needless to say, we had a great year. We were ranked in the top two all year. And then, at the end of the season, what mattered? We got the job done. We had individuals ranked in the top 10 during the year. Gabe was ranked in the top two pretty much the whole year. He finished second overall. And then our freshman, Hootie Haig, was seventh overall. So we had two first-team all-state runners. And all in general, like, we had a great effort from these eight, nine guys, plus the rest of our team, being just a strong team. We competed through a lot of unknown with COVID. We just did the best we could every day. We just hoped we had the next day to go and race, and we got everything done. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to do that, and the opportunity to be here tonight to congratulate them.
Good evening. Board chair, board members, Superintendent Stallow. As is our practice... Give it a minute. As is our practice, to introduce new administrators before the board, but before we do that, we should probably take action on their employment contracts.
Thanks, Jeff, for doing that voluntarily.
So I bring forward the initial employment of Sam Oak, Jeff Marshall, and Emily Rosengren.
Do I have a motion to accept the approval of the new administrators?
So made.
By Jonathan, second?
Second.
By Michael? Any comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0.
All right. So we'll introduce each of them. I will introduce Sam, and Dr. Bezek will introduce Jeff and Emily. So I'm pleased to announce now the hiring of Sam Oak as the Director of Equity and Inclusion. Sam will be working with staff throughout the district as the Director of Equity and Inclusion. Most recently, he served as the Equity and Multilingual Program Coordinator for Fairville Public Schools, and contracts with Minnesota State University of Mankato as an equity coach and trainer. Previously, he worked for Rochester Public Schools as an English language coordinator, and also as an English as a second language teacher in Rochester. Sam's a graduate of Hamlin University with degrees in French, Education, and English as a Second Language. Sam?
Given the opportunity to say something.
Thanks, Jim, for the introduction there. I am so happy to be here. It's been a great seven days so far. I've gotten to meet so many amazing people, and participate in so many amazing activities. Just last week, Dr. Stallow took me to the Rotary Meeting here, in terms of them preparing for the music festival. I was a member of Rotary in Fairville, and right away, I texted my Fairville team that they needed to step up their game. I was a child of a refugee. My parents survived the killing fields of Cambodia. We came to America, and we experienced poverty. We experienced not knowing the language. We experienced a culture that was very, very foreign to us. So this work of diversity, equity, inclusion is very near and dear to my heart. And I've just been so inspired by the student athletes that were here, the courage of the students who spoke up today, and I just can't wait to get down and do this work. The work of equity is done together, and it's only together that we will achieve our equity goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
I get to introduce a couple people as well, and, you know, it's always, you know, bittersweet. You have people on your staff that have been here for a while, and they get new opportunities and take new positions, but the good thing is, you get to go out and find some of the best and the brightest out, and interview a lot of people. We feel we've got a couple gems here. The first person that I have, you know, I'll go with Jeff Marshall, since Jeff, we've already, you know, kind of half-introduced yourself already. Jeff Burnsville, went to Burnsville High School, worked at Burnsville for 20 years, and was an AD there for a number of years as well. So when I was out, when Russ left, and I was going, hey, we need to go out and recruit. Jeff's name was always at the top of the list when we were going, who's available? Who's out there? And he's got some instant credibility with the conference, so that, you know, that's great for us, and great for our student athletes. So he lives in Prior Lake, has kids in the district and all of that, so I'm going to let him say a couple words. Thanks. I already spoke, so I don't need to say too much, but I am very excited to be taking over the reins with the Athletics and Activities Department at Prior Lake High School and within the district. The people that I've met so far have hit the ground running, and have been working very closely with the team at the high school, who are just fantastic. Beth, she's still here. She's just amazing, and I certainly want to give her a lot of accolades for everything that she's done over the last few months of handling the reins of that department at this time. But being able to work with such an excellent staff, wonderful coaches and advisors, and then, first and foremost, the athletes. I mean, those student athletes and those kids who are involved in activities are just absolutely amazing. So I'm very excited to be able to start at this point. As John said, I have some experience of seven years of doing this over at Burnsville. Last four years, I've been at Edina, and I'm very proud to say that we do not have any logo trademark issues here at Prior Lake right now. So I'm very excited to be able to move forward with that. But thank you very much. Next, we have Emily Rosengren, and she's joining us from Minnetaka. She was a 20-year employee there, and, you know, I've hired a lot of assistant principals, and you look for somebody that's just kind of got that spark and that, I do anyways, that personality, and look, you know, complements the team, and she has that. She's a great instructional leader. She was an instructional coach there. And when I called the principal, you know, you always wonder when you call somebody, you know, they give you little tells. And he said, you know, when she called me, he said, that was one of the toughest phone calls I've ever had to take. And you go, okay. You know, you feel good about the decision you made, because there's a lot of good people out there, and we're lucky to have her, and I'm going to let her say a few words right now.
Hi. I'm Emily Rosengren, and I'm really happy to be here. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, and to join the administrative team at Prior Lake High School. I loved seeing students here tonight. I haven't seen students in a few weeks, so it feels really good. And I'm happy to continue the work of supporting students and teachers and families, and I know that's a vision that you share as well. So I'm glad to collaborate with you on those things. Thank you very much.
Can I just say a couple words as well? I just want to also welcome our three new administrators. I have been in education for over 30 years, over 20 of those years, or almost 20 of those years, in administration, and I've hired a lot of people. It's one of the most important things that we do, especially hiring administrators. It is absolutely one of the most important things that we do. I would say that this arguably was the strongest candidate pool that I have ever been a part of. And so that's a huge kudos to Sam, to Emily, and to Jeff, who are sitting here this evening tonight. But it's also a huge kudos to the school board, to the rest of our staff and administrators, and parents, and community, and students, because the cream of the crop wants to be in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. So I want to thank all three of you for saying yes and for choosing us. One of the questions I always ask in final interviews with administrators especially is that I believe strongly in surrounding myself with excellence. How will you make us a better team? And the attributes, the talents, the experience that the three of you bring, I have no doubt you are going to make us a better school district. So thanks for saying yes.
Okay. With that, Jim?
I got one more, right?
Yep, next one.
9B. So again, Board Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Stallow, we bring forward an agreement with Prior Lake Savage Principals Association. Basically, all of these two pages said, we're going to do what the contract says, right? So for Dr. Edwards and for Joe Kabushik, they are on assignment in different roles. This basically says that they have a right to their jobs when this is done, and that pay and benefits and all of that doesn't change. So really, that's what it is, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the approval of the PLSPA Memorandum of Understanding for 2021?
So made.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Amy. By Amy, any comments or questions? No? I just said, thank you for doing what you're doing. Appreciate it. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six-zero. There's no unfinished business. And the new business, it's the annual milk and bread approval. I always look forward to this every year. I do, I kind of like it. It's exciting. Me and school's starting.
Good evening, everyone. Is he going to load my presentation?
It should be in there.
It should be here, right?
I saw her prepping it.
All right, perfect. Oh, I got it. Thank you. Yeah, okay. Sorry. All right. Good evening, Board. My name's Emily Malone, Director of Child Nutrition, and I'm requesting that the Board approve the following bid awards using escalated pricing. It would be Bevso for milk and dairy and Bimbo Bakeries for our bread contracts.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. Just on the milk, I was curious, do we put more options out or do we always have that many options? Do people, we have people bid on that, you know, like strawberry milk, soy, organic, lactose? Do we always have that?
We always have that.
Okay.
Yeah. We actually don't serve strawberry milk, but.
Yeah, no, I noticed that. I just find it ironic that some people don't even go there.
Yeah. So the dairy industry is, everybody's kind of buying out everybody right now. So we had a lot less, we only had two bidders this time. And the one Prairie Foods or Prairie Farms was actually the former Dean Foods. Bevso kind of brought, bought out everybody else but weren't allowed to buy them because of it being in monopoly. So there's not a whole lot of competition.
Okay. Okay.
They, they've never really done.
No.
Goals. So they didn't have a lot of the things that we were asking for.
Oh, they've never done farm, you mean the Dean?
Yeah, this Prairie Farms is just kind of putting themselves out there. They haven't actually served schools.
Okay. Hence their price.
Yes.
It's a little high.
Yeah, very high.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions?
I did.
Okay.
So it's, like you said, everybody's buying each other out. And we can see the changes in our, our vendors over the past five or six years have been quite different. So what does Bevso, you know, own now?
So Bevso became Bevso halfway through last year. And they were AgriPur before that.
Right, AgriPur, right. We had AgriPur before that.
Yeah.
But we also had somebody else, right?
We, we used to have Hastings. Hastings Creamery for a really long time. And they don't, they haven't bid on our, they haven't put in a bid for our business in probably four or five years. So.
But they're still around?
They are still around.
Okay, as an independent, not as part of the?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're a co-op.
Okay. Do we want to take these, well, I suppose we should take them individual. Okay. All right, I'm going to pull up the letter. It's hard for me to see that. Okay, do we have a motion to accept, are we doing just the milk and alone or the bread? Can we do it together? Okay.
Do it together.
Let's do it together. Okay. Do we have the motion to take the milk award to Bev South, St. Paul Beverages? And then the bread award to Earth Greens? Do I have a motion?
So made.
By Amy, second by Julie. Any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes six-zero.
What would happen if we said no to bread? Would we have no bread this year?
We only have one vendor.
I know, we only have one vendor every year.
Okay. Then Child Nutrition update.
All right. I'll just give you guys a quick update. I think the theme everybody has kind of gone along with is that, oops, I didn't want to share it, I want to present it. It's been a year. You remember? So I'll just recap last year and kind of look a little bit ahead to next year. Last year, we served almost 600,000 free breakfasts and almost 850,000 free lunches. And that was a combination of feeding students in person and feeding them when they were learning from home, if they were 100% learning from home, you know, it was a combination of in-person and curbside. About halfway through the year, we were able to add on Saturdays and Sundays. So we were doing seven days worth of meals. I think the last three quarters, we were doing seven days worth of meals just to capture some more revenue. So that middle picture there is kind of a fun one to me at least. It's 120 gallons of homemade spaghetti sauce. And we did that twice in a day, browning all that meat and then making the spaghetti sauce twice in one day just for one of our pickups at the high school. So it was a lot of food. And we were trying to do, you know, as much homemade as we could. We ran into a lot of issues with supply chain. Packaging plants were shutting down, meat packers were shutting down, trucking industry was having issues, you know, everybody was kind of feeling the same pain. But we were still trying to keep it interesting and keep it fun for kids. We started doing these meal kits. So this is an example of our breakfast meal kit and one of our lunch meal kits. And with the meal kit, the kids were able, you know, the kids got the meal kit, had some of our homemade items in it that they really like. And then it told them how to heat it up on their own. So they had a little bit of autonomy, something to do while they were at home. So then another, the other fun thing that we did was we got a couple of grants. So we got a $5,000 grant. It was called the Rapid Response Grant from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. And it was to get more farm-to-school produce into schools during the pandemic. So it was specifically COVID-related. And then we got a Scott County Public Health Ship Grant, the statewide health improvement plan grant for 8,500, another farm-to-school grant. And what we did with that money is we bought a roll-in cooler. And we're going to use the old space at the, it was the old Lake House Cafe space at the high school for a farm drop. So, you know, some of our little farms, you know, right around us don't have the distribution to drop off at all 10 of our sites. So, or they might only have 10 cases worth of green peppers. So they can come to the high school, just drop it all right there, and then we will deliver it to each of the sites. So it kind of opens up the doors to some of those little tiny farms that we have right around us in our community. So that was exciting. And then looking forward, we will be doing free meals, K-8, next school year, using the Seamless Summer option. It's a little bit different meal pattern and a little different program than what we did last year, which was the Summer Food Service Program. So Summer Food Service opposed to Seamless Summer, two different programs. And then the Prior Lake High School will go off of the Summer Meals Program for next year so that we will not be receiving funding for meals at the high school, which is going back to what we did pre-COVID. We're really looking forward to going back to our menu that we worked so hard to clean up, you know, using all of our clean labels, a lot more variety. We'll be able to bring back our à la carte program, which was put on hold during COVID and do some of those promotions that we like to do in the elementary schools. And then, of course, get back to our scratch cooking. So we're also, this summer, kind of starting to touch base with everybody who's involved in the garden programs across the district. The one that we focused on the most this summer has been with the High School Garden, Paige Benson, who is a Prior Lake High School alum. And she's right now going to the University of Minnesota in the Food Science Program. She's the one who's kind of spearheading our high school garden. She's working with students there, our kids, kids there. And she's also running the CSA. So we've got 12 shareholders for our CSA. It's a community-supported agriculture program. And 12 staff members have pay a stipend or pay, you know, pay a membership basically to be part of the CSA. And then she harvests every week and puts their shares in the refrigerator for them. So that money will then go right back into the garden. And we did get some more awards for next school year, more grants awarded for next school year. We got this full tray grant from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture for $18,235. We're really excited about that. That is mainly purely to purchase food. So fresh food, fresh fruits and vegetables. And we can even do proteins with $18,235. So that's pretty exciting. And then we were accepted into this pilot program. It's called the Harvest of the Month Grant. There's eight other districts that were accepted. And it's $1,000 to, you know, for like printing and stuff. And then they give us all kinds of different marketing materials that we can print and use to promote our farm-to-school program. So that's it. You guys have any questions for me?
I do actually have one. The Seamless Summer?
Yes.
So what's the difference between the one that we usually do?
Yeah. Yeah. So when COVID started, they just made that quick reaction and put everybody on the Summer Food Service Program. Summer Food Service Program had a very, it has a very lenient meal pattern. It doesn't have any calorie restrictions. You know, it's just, you, you're just feeding kids. And so we ran that from March of 2020 through last school year. They are not offering that anymore. And we are only able to choose the Seamless Summer option or the National School Lunch Program. The Seamless Summer option is the same meal pattern as the National School Lunch Program, but it has a different reimbursement rate that they've now waived and they're going to, you know, give us the higher reimbursement rate. But it's, it's very much like the National School Lunch Program meal pattern. So calorie restrictions and leafy greens and legumes and all those kind of meal pattern requirements.
Okay. I was curious. That was my question. Any other questions?
I'll just make a comment. Thank you. It was, it was a year. And I've seen some of those lines, people showing up to get those meals. And in the beginning, it was just something joyful to get out of the house, but people really came to rely on it. And I've been in some of the kitchen tours with Dr. Stallow and other board members. And your staff worked incredibly hard. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'd like to echo that thanks. I, I know that Emily, the leadership that you provided and the work that your staff did, your collaboration with operations and with every school building and principal through this pandemic has been absolutely unbelievable. And no matter the challenge, you always approached it, both you and Jamie, with a smile and a can-do attitude. And your staff felt that and the rest of the staff, and most importantly, the kids and the families felt that. So in a time of really hard challenges, you provided some calm and stability. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is presentation of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Vote of Non-Concurrents. And I think I saw Sarah. Oh, yeah, Dan's going to come up. That's right. Dan's going to come up and, yep.
Yes, Chair, Chair Well, Dr. Stallow and remaining board members want to present to the parent representative from the American Indian Parent Advisory Group. Sarah Wheelock is going to come forward here to present a document.